Me, our members, Sebelle Asante, Austin Higgins, and I, Cole, and Matt Cole. We have a full board of five members. The first item of business is all business. First of all, can you all hear me all right?
Well, I'm clear, Jared.
Great, thank you. The first item of all business is to review the meeting minutes from February 19, 2025. You all have copies of those minutes. Are there any questions or comments or changes to be suggested? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve them.
So moved.
Did you approve or approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt, for second thing.
Second.
New business. All right, 2025-04. Jenny Hutton Jacoby has applied for an appeal from the decision of the zoning administrator in accordance with the mass general laws, Act 48, Section 13 and 14, regarding a property located in 13 and 14 Harris Road in Nando in Nellis.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
David Little about the second item on the agenda?
I don't have a second item on my agenda.
About the wording for the special permit?
Oh, oh. Yeah, what's on the agenda? Right, right.
No, it's on the published agenda.
Okay, well, I guess I get the first one. I printed out the first one. Let me just get it, David, in a second. Yeah, we'll take that out of order.
Well, Mr. Mulligan, I don't mind waiting for him to give Mr. Little off the line, if that's okay.
I'm sorry?
I don't mind waiting a minute to get Mr. Little off the line.
Yeah, well, yeah, he, look, it's only taking a second, Ben.
Okay, thank you.
This is just a clarification of a previous, you know, I guess I didn't download that latest agenda item. But the refresh of our action, we have language.
So you've issued a special permit for the construction of the guest house on the property?
Yes.
And the, there was one condition that the lots be combined by deed, which we intend to do, but the property is registered with the land court. And as such, what we plan to do is remove the three lots from being registered, which is allowed now quite easily with the land court, and then they can be combined by deed, but it's going to take several months to do this. And my request of the zoning board of appeals is, could we change the language for the one condition to be, to be conditioned on the issuance of a certificate of occupancy versus a building permit? And this would allow the applicants to get started and for us to follow through in the meantime on that one requirement.
Excellent. I apologize for my confusion, not having the right agenda, David. But we had, we discussed that, I discussed that with the building commissioner and Jenny. So my regulation is, Austin, that was, you always brought up that point, and I think we all agreed with it strongly, but my own sense, I'm happy to hear from you, my own sense is this still incorporates the intent of what we tried to do.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Yeah, I think maybe we were under the impression in our last meeting it would not be a, you know, that long of a process. I think it's still following the intent of what we were trying to restrict, and you're still following through with going to the single lot from the current three in common ownership.
Is there any other, anyone wish to comment further on this in the board?
Makes good sense.
Do I have a motion to alter the language in that special permit?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, let me call the roll. Matt?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Sebelle?
Aye.
And Lynn?
Lynn, you're muted. So David, they essentially proceed at risk?
Yes, it's, the problem is, land court is an antiquated process, and it's going to take us several months to get through it, but the project itself is going to take well over a year.
Okay. Well, we have a vote, and you have changed, and I think, have you spoken with Jen about what that does to the 20 days, if we make any change or not?
We don't care, Mr. Chairman, whatever the appeal period is, it is.
Okay, well, we'll have to check with town council if that has any impact at all. Do you have your change?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Little. Now, Ben, back to our new business case, 2025-04. Before we, I think before we start, I'd like to have a chance to have the building commissioner explain his thinking on this, and then have you respond, as you will, if that's acceptable. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Davis, you want to take us through your thinking on where we are on this case?
Sure. Everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right. Ben, in his application, laid out quite clearly my view on the situation, and that is that by definition, permission, I'm not going to grant permission for somebody to build an accessory structure on an otherwise unimproved lot because that proposed accessory structure is not accessory to a primary structure. So it's built on the notion that for residential zones, the first structure to be, to be installed on a given lot should be a dwelling unit, primary dwelling unit. So that is the fundamental reason behind my decision on this.
All right, are there any questions of the building commissioner before we turn to Ben?
There's one hand raised in the audience. I don't know, Chair, are we taking?
No, let's, let's hear the testimony of everybody before we open up a public discussion. And maybe, and we may have some questions for you, Davis, as we go on. But all right, Ben, how do you like to respond?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you all hear me okay?
Very well.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, well, first of all, it's nice to see you all again. With me in the audience are Doug and Jenny Jacoby. Jenny is the title homeowner, and her husband Doug is here with us as well. I'm hoping you all have seen the property. It's at the end of Harris Road up in Nauset Heights. It's a, it's a small, you know, gravel road going in. It's very pretty. Their home is at the end of the road on the left-hand side, but going in, it really appears as if the road dead ends into their property. They also own 14 Harris Road, which is a lot on the right-hand side of the road, and when you got to the end of the road, you saw kind of a stone wall on the right-hand side. That stone wall actually sits in the road. And then that field that you saw to the right, that goes, that slopes down to the right, is 14 Harris Road. That's a completely separate building of a lot under zoning. I did the analysis under your Section 164-22A2, and it is, in fact, a building of a lot, and the family would like to retain it as a building of a lot, and it may be in the future that they want to develop it, or their kids or somebody want to develop it. But for right now, what they'd like to do is they'd like to put a swimming pool over there to use as a part of their property. They've presented a plan that David Little prepared that shows a pool located so it meets your required minimum setback of 10 feet to a property line, although we're not submitting this plan to show you the exact location of the pool, because that may change depending, again, how they landscape their property. But we're showing that they've still are reserving land, you know, to build a residence at some point if they wanted. The building inspector's interpretation that an accessory use or structure has to be accessory to a principal use or a principal structure, I think is a correct statement of law, at least as it applies itself to the case law and bylaw interpretation. But the cases that interpret that say that it's a function of the bylaw they interpret. And what I did as a part of this application is I presented you with a narrative where we went back and reviewed not only the Orleans zoning bylaw, but all, but the bylaws, and I've got them listed in the memorandum, in Brewster, Truro, Chatham, Harwich, Eastham. And they all have definitions that say, that define what an accessory use is or an accessory structure is. Orleans doesn't do this. Orleans doesn't define what an accessory use or accessory structure is. It has a use table that sets forth certain accessory uses that may or may not be allowable in connection with a principal use, but it doesn't define what an accessory use is. And because of that, it doesn't specifically say it has to be on the same lot. So the cases that interpret this have held that where the bylaw says that an accessory use is on the same lot, then that's defined in the local bylaws being something on the same lot. But in Orleans, it's not defined. Now, if we look at the actual history of Orleans, and I presented to the board through Ms. Higgins, a package of 27 properties that we identified, and this was pretty easy. All we had to do was to go to the, into the assessing records, and in our search, we just typed in Class 100, which is what's called an accessory improved property. The accessor actually classifies these properties that we've shown as properties that are improved with an accessory structure but don't have a principal use on them. We identified 27 properties in our initial search that showed properties where what people do, and this is a matter of common sense, you know this, is they will own a lot, and they will either buy the second lot at the same time, or they will buy it later to protect their interest, and they won't develop that second lot with a dwelling because they don't have feel that they have a need to, but they'll put something over there. They'll put a garage over there. They'll put a tennis court as a common use of an off lot, a swimming pool, some use of the land that really makes it part of the use of the other lot, but it's not on the same lot as the house. And so the town has done this at least 27 times before. I'm not aware of any variances where granted for this particular use. So I think Orleans has a pretty clear history of allowing people to use their second lots for incidental and subordinate uses as part of their single-family residences without requiring any zoning relief. And that's consistent, I think, with what the town would want, meaning if you require somebody, for example, the Jacoby's, this case, to build a dwelling in order to enjoy a swimming pool, then what you're doing is you're maximizing density, you're increasing the congestion in the neighborhood, you're increasing the use of the neighborhood, and you're inviting additional residential use in the neighborhood. So I think that having that requirement that you have to put a dwelling in there, and also it increases the expense to the applicant, meaning you'd have to go out and spend whatever you'd have to spend to build a dwelling in order to have a swimming pool. So I think what Doug and Jenny want to do is consistent with what a lot of homeowners in Orleans have done in the past. I can tell you from my own neighborhood in Shoreview, you know, two houses down, there's an owner across the street, he bought a lot, he put his boathouse, he keeps his boat in it. So I think it's consistent with the history of Orleans. I think it's consistent with a reasonable interpretation of the bylaw in Orleans, which doesn't require that an accessory use be on the same lot. And I think it's, I think in this case, you know, making a determination that the building inspector's interpretation that an accessory use has to be on the same lot would be a reasonable action on behalf of the board. I also have submitted a request for a variance from the bylaw provisions for allowance of the swimming pool in the off lot. And with the Chair's permission, I'd like to reserve the presentation on that and allow you to have the discussion, because if, in fact, there is a vote to overturn the building inspector in this regard, then I think I would be asking the board to allow me to withdraw my variance request. And that's the end of my presentation.
Makes sense.
And finally, Mr. Mulligan, I'd like to, I'd like to note, and all the members, that Doug and Jenny reached out to all their neighbors about this in advance. It's so far in advance that Ms. Higgins was receiving letters of support before we filed our application, which I've never seen before, but there are letters or emails of support from Lynn and Jim Gage at 5 Red Sox, Red Fox Trail, Janet and Joseph Vinito at 12 Harris Road, Ty and Pamela Harmiter at 7 Red Fox Trail, Sarah Hamilton at 8 Harris Road, Hank Schumacher at 28 Nauset Heights Road, M. and Fred Turner at 14 Ocean Road, Sarah Sanger at 37 Grandview, John Lauren Hoja at, and I don't know his address, and the Ayer family at 7 and 11 Harris Road. All of these people know the Jacoby's, they're good friends, they've been together for a long time in these neighborhoods, and they're in support of this actual relief. So that is the end of my presentation, Mr. Mulligan.
Questions from the board? Sebelle?
So you're saying that the swimming pool is to be considered an accessory structure?
Structure? I consider the pool, I don't, I consider the pool to be, and this is a little, I'm splitting a hair here, and the board will appreciate this. I don't think the swimming pool is an accessory use at all. I think of an accessory use as a somewhat different use that's accessory and incidentally supported. I don't, I don't think a pool is an accessory use, as a garage on your property wouldn't be an accessory use, or, you know, or, you know, a rack of a court in your backyard would be an accessory use. I don't think it is an accessory use. Technically, a swimming pool is treated as a structure under the zoning code, meaning there are minimal setback requirements 10 feet from a property line for a swimming pool. So I would concede that it's a structure. I don't think it's even an accessory use. I think it's just part and parcel of use. But in this case, it, to the extent that it is classified as accessory, it's accessory to the use of the single-family dwelling at 13 Harris Road, which when you go down there looks like it's one property because the road dead ends into their property. I would certainly think it's appropriate that if this lot were to be conveyed, it could only be conveyed separately from 13 if a dwelling were going to be built on that separate lot, because, because if it were to be conveyed separately and somebody else owned that lot, then they would not have any principal use that's associated in any way, shape, or form with it. So I think that it is accessory to 13 at this point.
But to me, it makes sense to see it as a use, maybe not call it accessory, but it is a use.
It is a use.
On a property.
Yeah, it is.
So that makes sense, because I know there are a lot of other properties where they only put, say, a tennis court because, but what's the definition of structure? Isn't structure with a roof?
No, no, it's not. No, a structure doesn't necessarily have a roof.
If you don't have a definition of...
Davis may get to it before I do, but, no, I have a definition. No, Orleans doesn't have a definition, I'm sorry. Other towns will say it's a, you know, it's an object that's affixed to the ground.
There's not, I didn't find anything for structure despite my searching. 164-22G does specify that elevated court games and elevated or enclosed swimming pools will be considered accessory buildings, but if this is not going to have a, not be elevated or be enclosed, it would not be an accessory building. You know, I'd consider it an accessory structure. Maybe one step before all of this, there are a lot of pools in the town of Orleans. Pools are not, they're mentioned in the bylaw in many areas, but requirements adjacent to pools, but the schedule of use does not actually define pools as a use. So I'm curious for other, other folks in town who have built pools in recent times, what is the process like to actually get that approved if not explicitly allowed in the schedule of use table in the zoning appendix? Any question for Davis?
Sure, Austin, thank you for the question. So I acknowledge that there's no definition of a structure in the zoning bylaws. It's very much, very much comes out of the building code, which is explicit that a building permit is required for an in-ground pool, that, and then you also made reference to zoning regulation that mentions setbacks for certain, it uses the word building, that unfortunately, because a swimming pool is not really sort of an inverted building, I guess, but in addition, Orleans has a fully promulgated regulation out of the health, out of the Board of Health that requires a code-compliant fence around a swimming pool, regardless of whether the in-ground pool has a powered safety cover. So in other words, in most towns, you can have either one or the other powered safety cover for your in-ground pool or a code-compliant fence structure around it. In Orleans, you've got to have that fence regardless. So I think there's some, I think that represents some additional consideration that's been made by the town over the years, that swimming pools are structures and that they require a very specific regulations in terms of protection, because they are considered, from a building code standpoint and a health code standpoint, inherently dangerous. So we have both of those elements involved here. And if I may, Mr. Chair?
Please.
I'd just like to make a comment in response to Ben's narrative that, you know, in the same sense that, you know, why not allow, why not allow the homeowners to build an accessory structure, including a pool on the adjacent lot for their enjoyment? I feel as though the boards should at least consider the question as to, and this is in particular if we're leading towards consideration of approval of a variance, but why it is that the homeowners aren't proposing to build the pool on the lot where they, where the structures already exist? Just wanted to throw that out there.
Can I answer that?
They don't want to respond to that?
If you don't mind, I think Jenny can answer that question.
Yeah, I can answer that. Where, if you saw where our house is, there is a flat area of land where, in theory, a pool would fit. It'd be way too close to the house, and for danger reasons, we really want the pool. We think pools should always be more of a destination. We have, we have grandchildren, and we want to, we plan to have, you know, a pool cover, we plan to have a fence, we plan to have an alarm on it if necessary, but I would never want a pool to be so close where a child could slip right out the door and there'd be a pool right there. So that is, that would be a main reason why we would not build a pool there.
Yeah, if I could, one more, one more to follow up on that. One other thing is that, you know, this has been the Hutton family for a long time, and they've exercised what I call conservative development. They haven't developed this lot, and they're paying taxes on it. You know, right now, that lot is assessed at being $744,000, which means that, you know, to be able to put the pool over on that side means they get some benefit out of this piece of land without having to develop the lot fully. So there's also that reason is to be able to enjoy the other piece of land that they have. That goes to Davis's question, you know, why not? They have this area that they can put the pool, recoup, you know, some benefit for all the taxes they've been paying for, I don't know, how many years, Jenny?
Since around late 50s, maybe 1916?
Yeah, late 1950s, 1960s, so it's really also a function of being able to use the land that they have without being forced to overdevelop it.
Here's a question. Would we consider coverage? It's a question to Davis. When we say building coverage, we include pools, don't we?
Yes, we do. It's a bit paradoxical, but a swimming pool is an impervious surface, so it is included in calculations for building coverage. Well, I should say for lot coverage, for impervious, it's not building coverage.
I thought it did not.
It's not, no, it's not lot coverage. For, I think it is, I think Davis is right, it's impervious, but I don't think it qualifies for lot coverage or building coverage.
Well, if there's a distinction in the bylaw, which I'm not 100% sure it is, depending on where you look, you know, building coverage, our definition typically here is for roofed structures, whereas lot coverage with regard to impervious surface and runoff, we refer to it as lot coverage.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chairman, the definition of building coverage is the buildable upland portion of a lot, which is covered by buildings as well as porches and bulkets, but excluding parking areas, pools, decks, or any permanent structures which do not have roofs. So that's building coverage. We don't have a definition for lot coverage in the bylaw, but I do know that when we get involved in some of the zoning dimensional requirements for development, there are some impervious coverage requirements. I think those more apply to the commercial developments, but that may be on the residential as well.
Can I ask a question about Harris Road? These lots are contiguous but for a road dividing.
Yes.
Now, you say in your submission, they have fee on that road.
They own the fee on both sides. So they, they actually own the entire section of Harris Road between the two properties, and they've been treating it like that. When you go up there and you drive up that driveway, you drive up into their driveway, and then you see their stone wall that's sitting, that's sitting a third of the way into the road, as well as a little hydrant and some other things. So, yeah, they, it's, they own the road between the two. It's just that the road, and you know this, you know, from over the years of being board members, the road actually separates the two lots, so that each lot is a separate zoning compliant lot.
And so joining the lots to be one lot is not of interest?
Well, you have to remember, you would be merging these two lots for the purpose of having a swimming pool, and you would destroy buildability, which means that they would lose the ability in the future to build a house for their children, or sell the lot, or whatever they want to do with it. So they would destroy a significant amount of value to gain a swimming pool.
Would that be still the case with the recent changes to accessory dwelling unit applicability?
Yeah, the, we're not talking about an ADU here, so, yeah, so.
Can I go back to the road for a second, Ben?
Yeah.
So the other people on Harris Road don't own the road, but they, these people do?
No, 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 no. And again, I haven't done title work for every lot on the road, but I'm going to make an assumption, which I think probably would bear out, which is that each homeowner owns that portion of Harris Road adjacent to their lot, to the center line. So that each lot on each side of the road owns a piece of Harris Road going up. Because, because this family owns the lots on both sides of the road, they own to the center line on both sides, and therefore own all of it. Tactically speaking, that ownership is subject to the rights of others to pass or repass over, but in this case, because it dead ends, no one's going to ever pass or repass over.
You know, I am familiar with some private roads around town, they built them, they're not just paper, but no one owns the name of the road.
Oh, yes, they do. Yes, they do. The way it works, and I don't want to get too far off the course, is the way it works is that assuming it's not a public road, when the developer creates a subdivision and deeds out lots in the subdivision, the statute says that when a developer deeds out a lot on a subdivision and doesn't state in the deed explicitly that the developer's retaining the ownership in the road, then automatically the ownership in the road goes along with a lot to the center line if it's a lot that where the developer owns on both sides of the road. If the road runs around the perimeter of the subdivision, where somebody else owns on their side, then that lot owner gets all the way across the road. And the intent, it's called the derelict fee statute, the intent is that when the subdivision's completely heated out, there's no interest in roads hanging out there somewhere that nobody can identify. It's made so that the roads go somewhere, so they automatically go with each lot. So in this case, the Jacoby family owns the lots of both sides, and under the derelict fee statute, they own Harris Road between the two lots. Subject again to the rights of others to pass and repass if anybody has those rights, but here, it's a non-question because the road doesn't pass through.
Okay. My experience, these subdivisions have a right of way, the roads are right of way through the properties, and they own, is only owned to the edge of the right of way. And it's a subject of great litigation or contest, I think, in other parts of town, other places in the world.
Well, no, you're right, Mr. Mulligan. In the more recent subdivisions, and I'm going to say subdivisions probably in the last 25 years, it's common practice for a developer to deed lots out, reserve the rights in the road, and then convey the road to an association that then is then managed by the developer at first and then managed by the owners. In those cases, the newer subdivisions, the road is a separate piece of property that's owned by the association, managed, and usually subject to a planning board covenant, et cetera. But in these older lots, you have to remember, these lots are created, and I think it was the 40s and the 50s, in the older lots, and in the smaller subdivisions, they just, the ownership goes with the roads.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question about the appendix? I believe you presented 27 properties that had development without a principal structure. Was any research done to find out how many of those 27 were permitted?
No, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't go back and research the town's files on, for variances or special permits, but in my memory, I've never, I've never seen, I've never seen an application in Orleans to get a permit for it.
But even, even simple building permits were, was any research done? But even, even simple building permits, was any research done on that?
No.
Aside from the zone really?
No, we just, we pulled all the field cards and we identified that all these accessory structures are used was on the off lots. That's it.
If I could ask a simple question.
Please, Sabell.
So if they were to, in addition to the pool, if they did like a small structure, say a poolhouse, with a bathroom, you know, that would count as, and then obviously septic system it would require, but, and they pulled out a permit, but they only did the work on the pool, is that allowed?
I don't think so. I mean, I'll let, I'll let Davis read it, but I don't think that not building the structure would assist in this question.
But you phase it out?
I didn't, I didn't hear everything Sabell said, I apologize.
I'm just thinking that if there was a simple, you know, small structure, instead of going for a variance, let's say, that if there was a small structure that they also proposed to build along with the swimming pool and that had a bathroom, so it would, you know, constitute a dwelling, basically, and they built the, they pulled out a building permit and they built the swimming pool, but not the structure just yet, would that be allowed?
It would, it would, off the top of my head, I would suggest that that would be a stretch. They would, so you're suggesting that both structures could be permitted at the same time, but only the pool could be built initially? So, I mean, there is a, although we tend to be very generous about it in this department, that there is a, there is an expiration date for building permits if they haven't been acted upon. Is the right word perfected, Ben?
I, yeah, I think, I think, again, Davis was one that, but once you pull a building permit, you have to be progressing with, you have to exercise it within six months or an extension year and you have to be progressing with the work in a forward manner or else it terminates. I think I've stated that correctly, Davis.
Yeah, thank you. So, and more specifically, to Sabell's question, so you were, I think you were suggesting perhaps like a guest house or a poolhouse or something?
A poolhouse, yeah, simple structure.
But it wouldn't meet the full definition of a dwelling unit unless it had all three components that are commonly regarded as necessary to meet that definition, which is sanitary facilities that actually refers to bathing, cooking facilities and sleeping facilities. So it's a bit unusual to look at the proposal for a guest house, which typically has two of those three, it usually has a bathroom and, and what, if it's finished habitable space, it would be considered sleeping space. Normally, you know, we're looking at this as an accessory structure on a property that's already been improved, already has a dwelling unit on it. So it's a bit unusual to consider how you would fit that in as a, to sort of get it across the line as a, qualifies as a dwelling unit to which the swimming pool could be accessory without it meeting the full definition of a dwelling unit.
Looking through zoning, you know, doing word searches on parcel land lot, as I'm sure you're very familiar with doing in cases like this, I found two notable areas that discussed development across parcel or lot lines. One relating to apartment development in 16431 F4. You have talks about combining lots for the purposes of apartment development. The other use, which is also listed in the schedule of use table, is for accessory scientific use. And it seems to indicate, it specifically says that uses whether or not in the same parcel as activity is permitted as a matter of right. Specifically for things that are for scientific research or scientific development are allowed to be put on separate parcels from the primary use. It indicates to me that that carve out is specific to, obviously, scientific use, but in some ways to me implies that non-scientific use is not allowed on accessory use on other parcels. I would say it's not explicitly stated as such, but the only thing that's listed here that does reference accessory use on secondary properties is for scientific use, which is approval by special perm. I assume, you know, pool would not meet that qualification, but just looking for some language that relates to this, where accessory use is not explicitly defined, I think to me indicates that accessory use would need to be within the same parcel of land. Or alternatively, the schedule of use would need to have pool as a, listed as a primary use and not an accessory use in order for it to be considered an allowable primary use. Pools are, let's say, allowed in town by, I'm not sure the exact means of legality, but folks are allowed to build pools, though not explicitly allowed in the schedule of use accessory use table. And so I think deviation from that and to create potentially a new primary use would require to be a variance and not allowable under the current zoning bylaws is my position.
And we've applied for a variance. I mean, we, you know, the board is uncomfortable.
All right. Yeah, let me go. All right, if someone in the audience had their hand raised, if this pertains to this discussion, we'd like to hear from them now would be good.
Sure. I mean, should I come up there or stand there? I don't know how far.
I would come up here so I can hear you, if you don't mind.
Just for the record, I'm John Moreno. For the record, our house is owned by LLC, so I'm a manager of the LLC, which is called Before and After Cape Cod. We probably have the most adjoining exposure to the Jacobys of anybody that the board sent notice to. We've been neighbors since 2011, really good neighbors since 2011. And I've talked to some of our neighbors and nobody has an objection to a variance. We actually have a pool that we built after we bought the property. The house was there before. So I think a pool is a great idea and we all do, we'd like to see a pool. The only request, actually two requests, is that it be screened and I know that the Jacobys are going to pursue that. They've told us all that before any formal notices went out. We actually have a lot of screening between us that we don't think will be disturbed, but, and we know it has to be fenced because we know a fence as well. The only other issue is we wouldn't want the pool variance to somehow trigger a future variance. In other words, where the pool is placed shouldn't become a hardship if the lot ever got developed in the future. Right? So that's, so, and I'm sure that David Little or whoever's doing the engineering can figure that out, but you have septic fields and the backup septic fields and the actual structure itself and all the setbacks, but I think as long as the pool is placed in a way where it's not going to trigger any other variance if the lot ever gets developed, I think the whole neighborhood is definitely in favor of you granting them a variance, so.
And that's, and that's the intention. You know, the intention is to make sure the pool is sited in such a way that future development of the lot would be conforming to zoning.
Yeah, because you wouldn't want to shoot yourself in the head or have to come back for another variance.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then, you know, if a variance creates a hardship for, if a variance creates a hardship for another variance, it kind of begs the question a little bit. So other than that, you know, we think a pool would be great. I mean, we have a pool and I don't think it disturbs anybody. And we went to all our neighbors who've already built the pool and we said, if we do this right, you won't even see the pool. And matter of fact, half our neighbors didn't know we had a pool in about five years. So I think that'll be the case here as well, so.
Thank you, sir.
So that's, for the record, you know, that's how we feel.
Thank you. Let me, let me just throw out my thinking here. I would much rather do this, if we're going to do this at all, by saying that the horse is out of the barn. We all know properties around town where the lot is owned by adjoining property with something else on it, just the 27 lot. We all know, everyone has one somewhere in their neighborhood, I think. Because when you get, when you start getting into variance, I think it's a high case. And I also have a question, and this is a legal question, this is beyond my ken. If we grant a variance for this lot or a pool, is that what that lot has become, a pool lot, and that, to build a house later? You know, it's, you know, we had a variance, we had a variance downtown for the laundromat because there hadn't been a laundromat before, so the variance is for a laundromat. That's all that can be built in that lot unless they get a change. If we grant this variance for a pool, does anything else on that property require a change in the variance?
Mr. Chairman, if I could address this, I think, I think the board can approach this two different ways. If it, if it elects to rule that the pool use on the off lot is permitted by right, it could say that that finding is conditioned upon, it's only permitted by right so long as it's being used as accessory to the dwelling at 13 Harris Road. If it no longer is being used as accessory to 13 Harris Road, it's no longer a lawful structure, meaning it's no longer permitted by right, which would require the building of a house to bring the property into conformity. The other approach, if the board were to approach it as a variance, the grant of the variance actually allows the board to impose conditions. And one condition that the board could impose is that if that lot were separated in ownership or control from 13 Harris Road, then it would have to have a dwelling built on it to bring it into conformity to the zoning bylaws. So it could address that issue both ways by preserving the right to have a residence and not have to get a variance to build a house on it later.
Well, yeah, except, yeah, I understand, but if you asked us for a variance, what you want to create is a special, unique variance tied to this particular property. If we just gave it as a variance for a pool, hasn't it become a pool lot? And to do anything else on it requires a change in the variance.
I don't believe so. I believe that if you grant a variance to have the pool on the lot, then that variance is required to operate as a pool lot, but if they, but if the owners wanted to bring the property into zoning conformity, for example, by building a single family residence on the property so that clearly it conforms to all the requirements of zoning, I don't think you need any further zoning relief to bring a property into full conformity with Davis, Davis may want to weigh in on that, but, you know.
So the, the buildable, the waiver of the requirement to build on a 40,000 square foot, that grandfather continues on even though it's been varied, it's a variance as just a pool. It won't meet the new variance, the new building requirements for a lot size, but even though we grant a variance for a pool, it continues to have that grandfather better.
I'm going to read the language very quickly, very quickly, Mr. Chairman, just to make sure that we're. 16422A2 says, "One single family lot, one single family may be erected on any lot regardless of a common ownership without adjoining land, which at the time the subject was adopted contained 15,000 square feet of land and minimum furniture of 100 feet." So I think that even if a pool is built on it, I don't think it destroys its protection under 16422A2. It's not, for example, like 48 section six, which says that, you know, you can build a lot that had 5,000 square feet. That's an initial buildability protection. I don't see this as initial buildability. This just says that any lot that meets these requirements, you can put a single family dwelling on it. Doesn't, I don't think it talks about what was on it before.
Well, okay, okay, except you've got a variance or a pool.
Well, if the board wants to avoid that question and then rule that in this particular case, with, you know, with the conditioning that it's only used as accessory to 13 Harris Road, that you're going to overturn the billing inspector and allow them to move ahead by right, that would avoid that particular question.
Well, we haven't even talked about satisfying the land part of the variance, so I think it's a hard, hard burden for you.
Yeah, I'd rather not see you get to a variance if we can help it, but.
Yeah, I would too. So I don't know, any other thoughts? Yeah, I think Davis has made his ruling, I think it's probably right, but I don't know that, yeah, sort of, I understand and I'm sort of sympathetic to the issue, and I'd like to help him get there, and I think the list is much easier than a variance. But, here's a question. If we, if we overhaul the Davis's ruling and say that the horse is out of the barn, it has been, we have by de facto allowed this to happen in town in numerous occasions and it has become sort of a part of our zoning pattern, and do that, it's a precedent. And how many of the lots out there that would take advantage of that precedence at this point?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I can't answer that question without doing some research with the assessor, but I can tell you, but I do think that if you overturn the billing inspector and you say that this use is allowed by right as accessory to the other lot owned by the same people, you are, you are essentially informing the billing inspector and the public of your position and your interpretation of the zoning bylaws. So I don't think that the billing inspector, you know, would be expected to go against that in the future.
No, that's not, that's not my question. My question is.
I think you're sounding present.
Yeah, how much future use would anyone have? How many, how many lots are out there that people want to build a swimming pool on that they own next to their present lot?
I can't tell you, but I, but I can tell you, let's say there's 100 of these situations in town, or there may be 100 if somebody tears the house down next door, I don't think it's going to be the worst thing in the world for Orleans. It just means that that lot's going to have a swimming pool or a tennis court or a garage instead of a dwelling and, and a swimming pool and a tennis court and a garage. So I, I think the ultimate result for the town of Orleans is probably less development rather than more, because it doesn't force people to build a dwelling.
Well, I think we agree that it's not going to be significant at any end.
Yeah, I don't think it will, but.
So.
I'll let you know, I'll be the first one to let you know, so, yeah.
Yeah. From my own point of view, if we want to do this, I'd rather do it that way than go through the, go into a pretzel to become a, to abuse the variance provision.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
If I may, I'd like to follow up on Matt's comment or question to Ben regarding the nature of the properties listed in his appendix that appear to contain accessory structures of one kind or another. I think it might be helpful to know when said structures on those additional otherwise undeveloped lots were built, as to say, how much zoning enforcement was there during the time that each of those structures or buildings was constructed?
There are certainly some structures included there that are older than 10 years old, and I mean, I'm not aware of what sort of zoning orders may have been imposed against them and if they're considered lawfully preexisting, nonconforming by Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 7. But it's, it's hard to tell without looking into each one individually. My assumption is that some percentage of them are lawfully preexisting, nonconforming per MGL, Section 7 there. But it looks to be there are some that may be more recent, or maybe there are some that have gone in front of zoning. It's, you can't tell without doing the research, certainly.
Right, and I don't mean to suggest that it would be a small task for the applicants to perform, but just trying to stay focused on similar cases. My only other comment is that in terms of a precedent, if it's, as long as it's appropriate for me to comment on such an idea, there is a, there are a number of other structures such as a swimming pool, some of which have been listed, tennis court, paddle tennis court, pickleball court, you know, these are all other similar recreational type structures that the board perhaps should consider as well in terms of what their decision tonight might prompt for other property owners in a similar situation.
Jerry, I, did anybody talk to our town historian, George Missouri? I, Jerry, I, did anybody talk to our town historian, George Missouri, about, about this? I mean, my, my, in reading all of this and listening to the commentary, I would think that the town intended to limit it to these kind of structures to the, an individual lot. They just wrote their zoning, they wrote it poorly. Unlike Chatham, Brewster, and all the other towns that made it very clear. I mean, that's my guess, but I wonder, did the town intend to limit it to, to, you know, a particular lot? And I would think the town, to Davis's comment, didn't want someone who owned multiple lots to sprawl an entire recreational complex across a bunch of lots. Just, that is what I would think, but they just wrote it really poorly. And to me, you know, given what we're looking at, you'd have to say, "I don't know, so I think I should allow this, because I don't know." But I also wonder if the town should go back and rewrite it so it's clear that, that, that accessory structures should be on the lot, one lot, not sprawling over more than one. So I just wondered what George would say when all of this was discussed. We didn't talk to George, right?
I didn't, no.
Okay, yeah, so I just, it's, to me, this is just a miss that the town had, but I can't imagine they intended for someone to have multiple lots and put a little bit here and a little bit there and a whole recreational complex, but... And I'm not saying this, this proposal was a recreational complex, but I do think there's a precedent here.
Yeah, but you know, even, you know, I, I, I agree with all that, and I, I'm sympathetic to Davis's position here. And it would be very helpful to know if this had been since we adopted zoning or not, these buildings. But let's just take your worst case, Liam, and say someone owns three lots, and puts a tennis court on one and a pool on the other and a house on the third. It's a big yard.
That's almost exactly what we saw in the, in the case that we just tidied up.
It is exactly what we saw in the case we just tidied up.
The resolution to that case was that the lots were combined.
Right.
Right.
But, but, yeah.
So, so is, is the, is the principal concern here the potential for conveyance of a lot with the pool separately with no principal dwelling on it? And, and, and end up with separate ownership between thirteen and fourteen?
That is one of my concerns. And overturning the zoning commissioner's finding does not allow us to impose restrictions on that use. Whereas something like a variance, or there's not a path for a special permit, to my understanding, but something like a variance would allow us to impose restrictions on the use of that lot post-sale, for example.
I, I...
The purpose of a variance is to allow someone to build something on a lot that is, is a chronitopographical lot. And I, and I have, it's my impression that once you, you know, it's not either way, once you grant a variance to something, that becomes a reuse of the lot.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, to go to, to go to Austin's point, I, I think that there is an ability to, to manage and control the conditions under which you overturn the billing inspector. You can make a finding that, look, in this case, and as long as the second lot is held in common ownership with the first lot, and the improvement on that second lot is used in connection with an accessory to the lot that's also owned by the applicant, then we find that we overturned the billing inspector. However, if in fact that lot were to be conveyed out, it would no longer be in conformity with the bylaws we understand it. So it would inform the billing inspector that these are the conditions under which you're overturning, so...
I, I understand that, and we can do that, but I go back to the hardship is owing to circumstances.
Well, no, I was suggesting, I was suggesting, I was suggesting that if the board were to vote to overturn Mr. Walter's determination, they could do it based on the facts recited herein and based on the conditions recited herein in which this lot is actually owned by the adjacent property or the property across the road and is used in connection with that. Based on those conditions, you're overturning the billing inspector. So that, that would not allow for conveyance out of the lot without development of that lot with a house on it.
The problem that I have is that I agree with Davis. I believe that overturning his determination is not correct because following the zoning bylaws, that's the correct determination. So how do you do it without overturning Davis's determination? Which, you know, it's kind of obvious that it is.
Well, the only other way to do it is a variance, which I, I, look, I can certainly present the argument for the variance. I, I, I think you're looking at two alternatives, neither of which is completely palatable to the board. So frankly, we're not, I'm not overly concerned which way you get there. But I'm happy to talk about the variance if the board wants to do that.
But my big struggle with all this is that pools are not allowed in the town of Orleans per zoning, because they are not specifically listed in the Schedule of Use. 164-10 fairly clearly says that, I'm pulling up now, "No building structure or land shall be used for any purpose or in any manner other than permitted or set forth in Schedule of Use." But we all know that pools are and have been, likely will be allowable, allowable uses. But I think it removes some of the flexibility that we have to allow it in cases where there are other things happening, like crossing lot lines or, you know, it being potentially a primary use on that lot or an accessory use to another lot, is that pools aren't defined as being allowable use.
Well, maybe we can approach this a different way. Look, and I started my discussion with this. Look, I can begin to list things that we do on residential properties that aren't listed in the zoning table. Kitchen, right, cooking, you know, going out back and having a garden, you know, parking your car in the yard. You know, there's a lot of things that you do that we don't list in the use table because they're just part of the way that we live. You know, and, and there's all kinds of things that we do. A pool is not listed as a use because I don't think of a pool as a separate use. It's not a principal use. It's not even really an accessory use. It's just something that people do on their property to enjoy their property. So that's why it's not listed. I think the only reason it's listed is because the town understands that a swimming pool has a structural, a structural element to it and a safety element. It's regulated in those ways. But I don't need to go, you know, if I, if they wanted to build a garden on this off lot, right, if they wanted to go over there and plant flowers and, and even put a fence up around those flowers, technically you're using the property, but I don't think it's, I don't think the building inspector commissioner decided, "Look, you can't put a garden on your off lot because it's accessory to your main dwelling, you can't do it." So I, I don't, I'm not sure the swimming pool rises to any, other than the dimensional aspect of it. I'm not sure the, the use rises to any level of speciality that requires separate, you know, separate notation, so...
Ben, let me go back to your previous...
I think Davis is trying to say something too, Mr....
Oh, okay, Davis, sorry, sorry. Davis, you muted.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, I wanted to say in response to Ben's statement that a, a garden is not considered a structure. A fire pit is not considered a structure. Because one parks a vehicle on a piece of property does not, you know, long-term change its nature, whereas a swimming pool or a sports court of some kind is regulated under the Building Code and is, and in the case of a swimming pool, also by the Health Code, they are, they are structures. So I just wanted to make that differentiation. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, thank you, Davis. And going back to your solution, your neat plausible solution of overturning the building commissioner's decision but saying, but limiting it to as long as it's tied to ownership of the thirteen, what authority would be to that?
Your authority, your authority would be that you would be interpreting the zoning code, which does not, and again, I, I understand some members have said that maybe there had been an intention to say that, but they didn't. So you could say, "We interpret the zoning code as saying that you can have this particular type of use as accessory to the principal dwelling use of thirteen. We can have it on fourteen, as long as those lots are owned in common ownership or owned by the same, by the same people, so..."
Okay, so the net effect of that precedent is just saying the horse is out of the barn, and if you want to build a, a swimming pool on a lot, you can build a swimming pool on a lot.
Exactly.
It would be that our interpretation is that adjoining lots in, under common ownership would be effectively the, the same lot when it comes to accessory use.
And if you think about it, if they were to merge the lots, you're right, it would be the same lot, but, but, but it would be a functional, functionally the same, except with the loss of the property rights by the homeowner and the ability to build the dwelling later on that you want them to build now. So you could limit this finding that in this particular situation where they're commonly owned and the swimming pool is used and it's adjacent property and it's used, it's used as part of that property, that will overturn the billing inspector. And so you're right, that opens a door to somebody else who owns two lots in common ownership that wants to build a pool on their second lot, they could do it. And, and again, I submit that I think that's a good thing. It's better than having somebody build, you know, a thirty-three thousand nine hundred square foot footprint house out there, you know, just to get the pool. It's, it's a less intensive use of, of the land, so...
Contrasting this with what we talked about with Mr. Little earlier in our last zoning meeting, the issue with that lot is that we had buildings physically crossing lot lines, which was the reason why we had suggested the combination of those lots. So for, for, what, what we've effectively said by, by doing that is that you have to, you'd, you'd have to conform by your setback requirements. We could not treat those lots as being interchangeable without, without a boundary.
Yeah, it, it, it is just easily distinguished from that for our consideration, but, well, we can go on here all night. Does anyone have a motion?
I'd like to hear the variance application, just to see how you would present that, Ben.
Okay, with the chair's permission?
No, let's talk about that. Yeah, okay, I, I, I just, I'm, we have a forecast, but the decision we have for the variance is not any easier than the one on, we have now here.
You have to meet, it's a three-legged stool, you have to meet all three criteria.
Yeah, I, look, I, look, I've sat in front of zoning boards for thirty-five years and presented various applications with varying degrees of strength from, you know, not passing the laugh test to, yeah, okay, this meets all the requirements. And in between, you get the difficult ones, where you want to grant the variance, but usually one of the criteria is difficult to ascertain, and that criteria is usually the, the leg of the stool that says you have to demonstrate that your hardship is owing or related to either topographical, a shape, or a soil condition. In this case, the hardship to the family is, in order to enjoy their land that they've been paying taxes on for all these years, in order to enjoy it in a less intensive way, they're going to have to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to build a dwelling that meets the building code and does that. They'll have to develop the land, they'll have to pay taxes on it and all that. That's the hardship.
Or combine the lots.
Or, or combine the lots, and, and then the hardship there is that they lose roughly, you know, seven hundred thousand dollars in value of their property, and they lose the flexibility to maintain this lot that they've had in their family since the late nineteen fifties. They lose the flexibility to use that later on for a dwelling or for some use because they want to have a swimming pool now. So they're going to, either way, they're going to lose significant value, and the, the standard is hardship, financial or otherwise.
And Ben, does the recent change that came with the Massachusetts Affordable Homes Act that allowed some flexibility with merged lots and unwinding that merger, does that, does that help at all here?
I don't, I, I think it only helps insofar as they want to develop it for affordable housing, Matt, but I don't, I haven't looked at the statute with an eye towards that, so I don't really know the answer to that question.
I don't think it's, it's restricted to only affordable housing. I think it allows that house to be built in the future on a merged lot as if it weren't merged. I don't know that it allows for two separate deeds.
But the hardship, but, look, I think the hardship to the applicants is clear. If they're, if, if they merge the lots, they lose a separately buildable lot. That's a significant loss of value.
Yeah, that's, that's a financial hodge.
It is.
But this, but it's the circumstances of the soil conditions and the shape and the geography of the land.
The hardship has to be owed at that, and so, look, it's an unusually, it's, it's, it's a, it's a lot that slopes downwards away from the road up to the, to the north, nor, I think it's the northwest. It, it has a topographical condition. It's unusual that they own the lots on both sides of the road and that what is actually creating this, this differential between lots is the road itself. So there's a, there's a shape condition. I'm not sure how you tie that to the hardship. It is an unusual situation, but, you know, I'm not sure how you tie it. I've had boards grant variances with much less of an unusual situation. And then the third leg of the test is, can you grant the relief without substantiating derogating from the spirit of the intent of the bylaw? The intent of the bylaw is to, is to minimize congestion and minimize density. And so I think, and also, pools are allowed on lots that have homes on them. So the bylaw doesn't intend that there not be a pool in this location. So I think that you can grant the, you can grant the relief without derogating from the spirit of the bylaw. So I think, I think the argument's there. It's not strong. It's not strong on the tie between the hardship and a topographical or shape or a soil condition. That's where it's not strong. But the board can, look, you have, everybody in the neighborhood is supporting this. I guarantee there's not going to be an appeal of this. It won't set a precedent. It'll avoid the question of, you know, the horse out of the barn issue. It'll avoid having to overturn the billing inspector's determination or, you know, create, you know, a record determination of the applicability of the bylaw in that situation. So I think the variance, even though it's, it's a tough variance to grant, I don't think it'll be tested, and, and I think it will avoid the other presidential issues that you're concerned about.
All right, let me, let me take a poll, not official vote, just a sense of the board. I guess there's really two questions. The first question is, are we sympathetic to this issue? We want to help these people go, build a pool on that lot? And if we do, that's sort of the first question. I mean, are there, are there four votes to proceed with either a special consideration such as Ben has mentioned to overturn the commissioner's finding, but with the condition that it be tied to the thirteen, lot thirteen? Or do we want to go forward and try to do it as a, as a variance? So I, I guess if there are two people who don't want to do this under either one, we ought to just call it a day. Are, are, are there...
I can't, I can't see doing this under the variance provision, variance criteria, meaning all those requirements. I think if we were to explore a special permit with various conditions that tie that ownership and dealt with that, I'd want to first see some more information provided about the twenty-seven properties in which, which had building permits and which didn't, which, which Milton has here tonight.
Well, I, I feel your concern about the variance. That's why I'm not going to get, because I don't think I can support a variance. And I'd like to do it, I, I'm sympathetic to the issue. We'd like to find a way to do it. That's, that's where my concerns are.
May I ask? I thought we said that, I thought you said, Ben, that a special permit is not possible.
I, I don't know, I think Austin said that, but I don't, I don't see the bylaw as authorizing. We, we, we're not in a pre-existing non-conforming lot situation. It's either a use that's disallowed, in which case you need a use variance for it, or it's, or it's, or it's an interpretation of the zoning code that differs from Mr. Walter's interpretation of the zoning code.
Yeah, I think the only path for a special permit to allow this use is if it was deemed scientific. I think it's the only carve-out that we have to cross.
I, I don't see this as a use.
You don't see the pool as a use, or you're saying you support it?
No, the pool's not listed in, as a use in the use table. This is a residential use of a residential lot.
See, what I believe is that you're, you're right, Matt, and also Davis is correct, and I think it falls on the zoning bylaws. The zoning bylaws are, it's not clear for such cases. And to me, I believe that it makes sense that if they want to use the site as a, for a pool... And to me, uh, I believe that it makes sense that if they want to use the site as a, for a pool, I don't see anything negative about that, but the zoning bylaw doesn't allow it. And I would be in favor of going for a variance, even though it's kind of a stretch, obviously, but there are, it just makes, it makes sense to allow them to have a swimming pool, I think, there.
Let me, let me ask you a question, Matt. Let's say they come back and they, and they find that there have been, whatever they find, let's find, let's say the easiest case. Let's find that there have been a number that have been, that have, well, there's two things. Have they just been done without getting authority? Or have we found some that had some permitting authority into it? Does that change things?
It, it does. I think it'd be treating them unfairly not to. I mean, you know, look, I, I'm one vote. If, if there's four others that think that you should go down the variance criteria, I'm happy to, I'm happy to watch.
I, I don't think we should go down variance. I'm, I'm with the, I don't think it meets the criteria for variance. So that's where I am. I wouldn't vote for that. Um, but, but I do, I, I do want to ask colleagues, you know, the zoning bylaw doesn't allow this pool to be built on this lot. Where does it not allow that? That's what I'm having a question about.
That's what I started with. That's what I started with. I, 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 I think you could find.
I don't think it, I think our zoning bylaw is silent on this issue. And, and so to me, I, I, I don't want to overturn Davis because I think he is appropriately ruling based on the way these kind of things are done in most towns. But our town doesn't, is silent on it. So I feel like, um, we would need to allow it.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I, you could find that because the bylaw is silent, that a swimming pool is a separate use. And because it's a use that is not regulated by the bylaw, or I, I don't think it rises to the level of a use that would be prohibited by the bylaw. Again, I, I think it, I think it, I understand there are dimensional aspects to the pool that don't exist, for example, with a garden or a parking area or something else that you may use your lot for. But again, it's, it's, we're not here because of a dimensional situation. We're here because of the use of the land. I would suggest the board could find that the swimming pool doesn't rise the level of a type of use that would be prohibited by the bylaw by being on another lot. That it can be, that they can do it. And that, that would regard any conditioning at all.
Yeah, I, 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 I.
It's tough.
If you go, if you go back to first principles, what's the whole purpose of having bylaws? It's to protect the appearance of the community.
Right.
Uh, and it's to keep, it's to keep industrial zones together and commercial zones together appropriately, and you don't get mixed neighborhoods with mixed things. And to keep the, and they have forty thousand square foot lot, to have some openness to it. I, I, I don't think having a pool owned by a family in a different lot in any way rises to a concern of first principles of zoning. I, I think, and then going back to, to Lynn's worst case, they have a house with three lots and they have a pool on one and a, and as long as we don't violate the setbacks, don't treat it as one lot, I don't think that's the worst thing in the worst appearance in town.
But I think you're, you're assuming that common ownership remains common ownership. I think the concern here is the potential to have, um, a, a pool on a lot that has no principal dwelling and that can be owned separately and then becomes an attractive nuisance because it's not, um, owned in common. And I don't think that's the applicant's intention at all.
No.
Um, that's why I think conditions that prevent that might be the mechanism here.
Or, I, I'm not sure, the problem is overturning the building inspector doesn't give the board the ability to impose conditions. However, the board does have the ability to, in its determination, to inform the building inspector that under certain circumstances, this, this is not something that is prohibited by the zoning bylaw. In the circumstance in which the pool is being used in connection with, you know, a, a property in proximity that's, that's, that's owned and controlled by the same entity, you can say, under those circumstances, this is, this is allowable.
And so if the circumstances change?
If the circumstances change, it's no longer allowable.
So, so Ben, you buy that argument, and somebody comes in tomorrow and says to Davis, I, I want to build a swimming pool on a lot next door that I own.
Yes.
What does he, what does he say? Oh, but it has to be tied to, we have to go with the board and get some condition?
No, no, not at all. I, no, not at all. Because again, part of your function as a board, it isn't just to approve permits or, or hearing petitions. It's to inform the building inspector in certain circumstances about how you interpret the bylaw. Meaning he walks away from many hearings understanding something about how you interpret the bylaw. If his understanding at the end of this process is that in a situation where someone builds a tennis court or a swimming pool on what I call the off lot, and it's used in connection with another piece of property in the proximity owned by the owner, that that is in fact a permissible interpretation of the bylaw, he'll understand and everybody else will. That means that if this lot gets sold, for example, and somebody unrelated buys this lot and doesn't build a house, they are now no longer in conformance of zoning.
Yeah, but that's not codified anywhere. So unless we have a special permit or a document like that that's reported the deed, that, that, it's useless.
Well, no, it's codified, it's codified all the time. It, it happens, again, it's, it's something that comes up. Part of what happens in these meetings is, is the common understanding of how to apply the bylaw. And that happens over a course of meetings with these boards. And building inspectors understand that. You're right. There's no condition on this property. However, the building inspector will understand that if this property, you know, is, is not used in connection, it's in violation of zoning. So that, I mean, that's part of the way that building inspectors operate with zoning boards. And that's one of the reasons why to the bane of practitioners like myself, building inspectors send everything to the zoning board. Because they need the zoning board to, to determine under what circumstances certain activities are permissible. So.
Correct. That, that's the way, that's the way to get a decision on record on the deed. If we, if we simply overturned the building commissioner, which I, I'm not interested in doing, um, and then releasing every empty lot to, to build this without, without something on the deed that says that they need to stay in common ownership or in the alternative, build a principal structure, um.
Well, I mean, look, we're, I mean, we're more than willing to, to draft the, you know, a condition and record it in the registry of deeds and, and bring that into the building inspector that, you know, that's the intention. We can certainly do that. But I, and, you know, we do that, you know, for example, sometimes we'll commit a merger to things, we'll, we'll provide affidavits to the assessor that we intend to use two lots together for merger purposes. We can do something like that if the board's looking for that. But that again would be a conditional overturning. That would say, provided the applicant provides a recorded statement, you know, of intent, you know, and so long as they maintain that intent, you know, that it's in conformance, we can do that. I haven't really thought about that thoroughly, but we can do it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would comment, uh, and I hope I'm not overstepping my bounds here, uh, trying to be in an advisory role. But based on my interpretation of the zoning, which is what this meeting is about, I want to remind everybody that, uh, zoning is about districting, as, as was referred to before. This is a residential district. Um, and there's a lot of implications that come with, uh, controlling, uh, and monitoring development in a residential district. Um, and, and that is part of why, uh, I made the decision that I did, that I don't feel it's appropriate in a residential district for a, for a recreational structure that is not, uh, in any way habitable. It can be used, but it is not a habitable structure, should, should be built on a separate lot. And I, and I just wanted to remind the board that, that there's a lot implied in, um, in our zoning bylaws. It's not, not written explicitly. It may not be listed in the zoning table of the schedule of regulations. Uh, but that is, is, is part and parcel of our responsibility to, um, to, to view zoning in a certain way. Thank you.
Let me ask, let me ask you this, Davis. If, if the research came out that a lot of these properties in town uh, that have these single uses on a, on a piece of property, it's not a dwelling, and they were done since zoning was adopted, would, would that influence your thinking at all?
It, it would. Um, I, my understanding and experience, uh, having been a building official for several years now is that I, I do have, uh, responsibility to look back and, and try to understand the decisions of my predecessors. And, um, and not to say that I'll always agree, but that I do have responsibility to provide some consistency. In other words, the, the town is bigger than me, the town has a history longer than my stint as the building, as the zoning enforcement officer. So that would certainly make a difference to me. Um, I, I, um, I was building inspector in this town for two full years and I've been the commissioner for over a year now. And I, I have not come across during that time uh, any, any such situations, uh, that were, that were permitted on a residential property that was not a dwelling in it. So I know that's, that's not a big look back. And I, and again, I admit that, uh, it's not listed explicitly in our bylaws, but it has always been my understanding as kind of a basic tenet of zoning, that an accessory structure needs to be accessory to something. And so, uh, perhaps it's worth considering, just kind of do a little bit of a thought experiment. Um, if, if, if this decision, if the pool is somehow allowed on a separate lot, standing alone, uh, I want to ensure, I would like the board to ensure that there are proper protections in place because if somehow down the road, that lot were conveyed with just a swimming pool on it and it were somehow protected or argued that it could remain, um, that concerns me because enforcement would be quite difficult. In other words, you know, we're in the throes of developing, um, uh, more comprehensive rental registration for, for residential properties. And who's to say that a pool, and I don't mean to suggest this for the, for our homeowners, uh, in, in discussion tonight, but who's to say that the pool couldn't be rented, you know, on its own, uh, because it's, it's, it's on a, on a lot that had a plenty of parking? And I just, it, it makes me uncomfortable. It seems like uncharted territory. So thank you for listening.
We could certainly, look, we could certainly go back and try to pull the permitting histories for these various lots. I, I don't know. I mean, I, I think, in, in thinking through this, I think what we're really looking at is when were the homes built? You know, to get at least an earliest date when something may have been developed and we can go back. I am not sure, Davis, whether a tennis court requires a building permit or not. I'm guessing the fence might. But I can certainly go back and do some research in the town files and provide you with whatever research we have. Are, is, is, are the members suggesting that if we were able to demonstrate to the building inspector that there was a consistent history of this type of activity being allowed, that maybe this was a decision the building inspector could revisit before we come back before you?
Um, well, I don't know. That's what Davis said. I think Davis has said that even if, uh, there, there are some instances in the past, he's still concerned about separating, uh, uh, these kinds of properties without a dwelling on the property. You know, he gave a very graphic example of, that even if we found out that in the past it was done, it was oversigned, or it, uh, it doesn't, and there's strong arguments against allowing it to happen just continually without additional law or regulation.
That's not what I heard from Mr. David, from Mr. Walter. What I heard him say was he, 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 he is cognizant of the history of the town and tries to be, be a part of that history. But I think that means, and again, I'm going to put so many words in your mouth right now, Davis, that's not funny. But I think it means that, look, he has an obligation to correct errors. And he's, and, and, you know, the doctrine of municipal stoppage allows him to, to not have to go with bad decisions in the past. But at the same time, if the town has a history of permitting this type of activity, then I think disallowing this applicant from doing it would be unfair.
Yeah, okay. I think that's right. I don't want to put words in Davis's mouth either, but he's fine.
I, I, generally, I agree.
Yeah.
I think in terms of process, it might be advisable to expect that the decision will stay with the board uh, once that information is received. But, um, I, I, I'm not sure how appropriate it would be for me to, um, reverse my own decision. Uh, unless the, 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 the information that you provided would subsequently make this overwhelming. Um, but again, I, I, I don't have a sense that it would.
Well, what I, what I can do with, with my client's permission is request a continuance. And then, and then do the research, present it to the, to the board and also present to the building, zoning, to Davis at the same time. So that when we come back here, everybody is prepared, you know, with an understanding of what that information is. I, I have no idea what, what we'll find. I have no idea. I only know what the assessor is assessing right now as, as, you know, accessory improved laws. So.
I'm happy to make a motion to continue.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Well, before you know it is, I would like to, uh.
Can I say something?
Yeah, would you mind if, is it okay if Jenny says something before the board?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, come on up.
Where do I look there?
Anywhere. Just, you can, yeah, we'll make sure you, what I have been doing, we'll get Sabell at the same time.
Hi, I'm Jenny. I just wanted to thank, thank everybody. I can tell you're taking a lot of time and, and putting a lot of thought into this. And I, I fully understand the issues of setting a precedent and how you want to be very careful with that. So I, I a hundred percent understand that. Um, I just wonder if it would be helpful at all, and, and maybe this is more for Davis, I don't know. Have you, have you seen the property? I'm just curious if you've been up Harris Road?
I have.
Oh, you have? Okay. All right. So you, so you can visualize what we're talking about? Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure that you had, you know, that you had seen that. Um, so that was just my main, my main thing. So, um, yeah, I think that's all I really wanted to say. I just wanted to, to thank you. I understand. Um, and I realize that I can't predict the future, obviously, um, but I can say that we've always used these two lots. It's where my family's heart and soul is. It's where my parents' heart and soul was. It's where our children's heart and soul is. So, um, and, and the front lot allows us to have the view of the ocean from the back lot. So there's, it's, it's, you know, I, again, we can't predict the future, but I don't see the family ever selling this piece of land, ever. Um, and the pool would always be considered part of that one lot. That said, David Little pointed out to me that if we joined the lots, financially, it'd be a big mistake. And then I started hearing my dad's voice saying, don't do that, don't do that, and be forward-thinking in that way. So I'm just trying to figure out a way to have this pool, um, for my old arthritic body. Um, and for, um, again, because of the sharks and all of that, just trying to enjoy, um, the Cape as I've known it all my life. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gopie. I have to say that your remarks are very gracious and understanding. And I'm not sure if I were in your shoes, I'd feel generous.
No, I, I do understand. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm, so, when, April, April second or sixteen?
No, wait, wait. Sabell, you want to make a comment?
No, no, I just seconded.
Wait, you seconded?
Yeah.
I think I failed to mention a date.
Really? There's a question. Are, are we taking a variance off the table or not?
I would rather keep everything, I'd rather keep everything open during the continuance, Mr. Chairman.
What was that, Ben?
I'd rather keep everything on the table during further discussion next time.
All right, very good. Uh, do we have a date, Matt?
I filed, I filed the list one, um, Ben, it would either be April second or April sixteen.
I.
Your brother told me the second, but.
Well, I'm just not sure. We have to get all this stuff in.
Oh, yeah, I don't know. That's all.
We just don't have enough time to do that.
Okay, whatever, whatever's good for you.
I think April, April sixteen, if you don't mind.
I want to find my motion to the sixteen.
I should ask, is there anyone else in the other world or anywhere who wants to make a comment on this application for our discussion?
No man's raised.
All right, very good. Thank you. All right, let me call the roll of the motion. Uh, Sabell?
Aye.
And Austin?
Aye.
Uh, Lynn?
Aye.
Yeah, Matt? Yeah, and I am too. So you got a five-zero vote. So we'll see you on, on April sixteen, Ben.
Yeah, thank you all for your time. Thank you. Thanks, Sabell.
Is there some sort of a min-viable legal house that you can build on a structure? I'm curious, what's the, certainly you'd like to build a four-bed, three-bath, you know, house on the structure. But I'm curious, what, what would the minimum viable structure be? You know, it has to have baby facility.
Bathroom, bathroom, kitchen.
Yeah. So i- is it possible that a path is to construct a temporary, not temporary, but temporarily cosmically?
Theoretically, theoretically, you could build, you could build a, you know, a pool house with a, with a, with a bed, a bathroom, kitchen. But you'd have to put a septic system in. You'd have to, you know, you'd have to, you'd have to do the things that are necessary to build a home. have to, you know, you'd have to do the things that are necessary to build a home.
Yeah. Looking for paths.
Yeah, no, I talked to McPhee Associates about that, and she talked about all of the expense. You could have it's a tiny house, which would just be kind of prohibited because of the law, because of the laws of the town. It's all a sudden, it's like, oh my God. So...
Thank you, everybody.
Is there anything else to come before the meeting?
What else?
Austin, give a motion for us.
A motion to adjourn.
I got your email, you're back tomorrow.
All in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you.